I would like to read from Psalm 119 as our prayer, but from verse nine, from verse nine to sixteen. Psalm, the Psalm 119, verses nine and end at verse sixteen. Psalm 119, verses nine through sixteen. Let us start in the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. How can the young keep his way without fault? Only by observing your words. With all my heart I seek you. Do not let me stray from your commandments. In my heart I treasure your promise that I may not sin against you. Blessed are you, O Lord, teach me your statutes. With my lips I recite all the judgments you have spoken. I find joy in the way of your testimonies more than in all riches. I will ponder your precepts and consider your paths. In your statutes I take delight. I will never forget your word. Lord, thank you for making it possible for us to gather and to hear your word and to study your word and to study the context of your word to us. Continue to bless us with inspiration and with understanding. May we apply what we learn to our daily lives and that we may bring your love and your inspiration to all our brothers and sisters. And we make this prayer through Christ our Lord. Amen, amen. So, so we are going to study and we are going to look at the stories in the book of Judges. But I want us to situate ourselves. I always want us to know that we can tell the story up to this point. You can tell the main stories. We can remember the main stories of the Bible from Genesis all the way to Joshua. Now we are going to take Judges. So in order to do that, I thought I will go through the timeline, the historical timeline of the Bible. And you will have that, you have that already on our site on the flag note. So you can download that and print that out. So you know the timeline from Genesis, the stories that we are talking about, the timeline that have been put on them, what time they occurred and how they are progressing from Genesis all the way to where we are right now, the book of Judges. The timeline itself, I'm going to run through it. It's going to go all the way through the New Testament. So that I don't have to explain that anymore. As we go forward, you just plug it in, you plug in the stories in that timeline. So you have the biblical historical timeline. And so we go to the Old Testament. I mean, so we have the Bible, we have the Old Testament or the First Testament and the Second Testament, the New Testament. And all the stories take place in certain historical, certain times, certain periods. So Genesis chapters one through eleven, which we call, where the stories we hear there are stories of the prehistory of the world, the prehistory of the entire world. And, and the date, the timeline that has been put on that is 4004 B.C. The Bible thinks about, about the world being 4000. Now, if you add our era to it, it's more than a 4,000 years old. That's, that's what the Bible thinks. But the Bible, remember again, the Bible is not concerned about that, how old the world is. The Bible is concerned about how did sin come into the human heart? How did we begin to do bad? How, the Bible is trying to answer that. So the Bible can, can err on the side of dates and scientific and historical dates. The Bible is not concerned about that at all. So, but this is the timeline that the Bible thinks that the world was created. Genesis chapter one starts with 4004 B.C. Already, that's, that is not correct because carbon testing and science and archaeology has shown us that, that there were earlier civilizations in Egypt, in Greece and other places. There were earlier civilizations. There are older religions that are older than the biblical religion, that are older than that. So 4,000 could not be, but this is Israel's religious understanding. Israel, and we are Judeo-Christian. So we, our religion is tied to the Israelite religion and Jewish religion. So we are called Judeo-Christian tradition. So we pick up from where they left off and, and, and develop our faith. Our leader, the one who formed our religion was a Jew, was an Israelite. And practiced it throughout his life and then made something new and handed it over and invited all of us to be part of it. So, so Genesis chapters one through eleven is prehistory. We can't account for everything in there, but it's just accounting for how evil came to the world, how the world was created, how evil started and things like that. And it goes from 4004 to 2234 B.C. And then the timeline given to Abraham, that is the history of Israel. Now we begin to talk about the prehistory of Israel itself. Okay, so they talk about the whole world, the whole humanity because they knew that they are not the only one living in the world. They saw other nations, they were fighting other nations. So they knew that there were other people, not there, not just them. So they, they first wrote about how the whole world came about, how everybody came about, including themselves. And then they wrote a story about how they came about, their own history. And it starts from Abraham, Genesis chapter 12. Okay, so the, the history of Israel starts with Abraham and that's 1996 B.C. 1996 B.C. through 1689 B.C. So you are talking about the story of Abraham. You are talking about the story of Isaac and Jacob and Joseph and all of them and all the way till they ended up in Egypt. So that is the end of Genesis. And then the book of Exodus picks up from there. Picks up from there and we talk about the story of Moses, how Moses brought them out of Egypt through the Exodus, whether they had to move. That story, we began that story, the story of Exodus begins with 1571 B.C. All the way to 1451. So the Exodus, they're moving out, the extraction of the Israelites out of Egypt and freeing them starts from that. That's the timeline for it. And it goes all the way to the banks, to the banks of the river Jordan before they entered the promised land. So the Exodus goes, we know all the stories, we are talking about all the stories. They, they left Egypt, they, they crossed the Sea of Reeds or the Red Sea. And then they moved on, all those stories. Then made them go to Mount Sinai. And then God made a covenant with them and gave them a commandment. And then they started moving on all the way to the banks of the river Jordan. And so in the Exodus, you can also write in there all the stories in the book of Leviticus and Numbers, okay? Leviticus and Numbers and in fact, Deuteronomy too. Leviticus, Numbers, Deuteronomy, all go with that, that part there of the Exodus. Because the book of Leviticus is all about God giving them laws. The book of Numbers is that God giving them laws, more laws, but also moving them, they are fighting wars on their way to the promised land. And the book of Deuteronomy is about a summary of all that has taken place, a summary of the laws at the bank of the river Jordan. And then the book of Joshua talks about they crossed the promise, they crossed the, the, the river Jordan and entered the promised land. But oh, there were a lot of people there. There are a lot of people occupying the land, a lot of different tribes, different nations. The Jebusites, the Perezites, the Amorites, the, the Itites, 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 all the Itites. There are people there. So then they have to fight, they have to conquer, they have, they have to enter into, into conquering and fighting wars. So Joshua led them to enter and conquer the lands and share the land among themselves. And so I showed you the map last time about who lived where, the 12 tribes of Israel, who lived where. We say the 11 tribes because one tribe, the tribe of Levi, did not get a land because they are the priestly tribe. And the priestly tribe is supposed to eat from, they are supposed to feed their families from a portion of the sacrifices from the temple. They are supposed to live, that's their profession, is to offer sacrifices in the temple. So they eat from there. So, so they don't need a land to farm, they don't need a land to cultivate. So Levi did not get, get a land, but the rest, all God lands, okay? And so we'll come back, the book of Judges will pick up from here, okay? The book of Judges, the book of Judges picks up from here. How they, when they finally settled the land, how they lived their lives. From Judges all the way, the book of Judges all the way to the book of Samuel. So all the stories that took place in that is what we are going to learn. That's where we are right now. So, so we, we can tell the Bible story all the way up to this point. But I'm going to go on to the end, to the New Testament. And then we'll, we'll, we'll see if we can touch on a part of Judges. So they lived their lives there all the way to the point Samuel himself was one of the Judges. So altogether, I know, I ask you to go and count, how many Judges did you find? Okay, let me put on, just, I want, I want to hear. Yeah, unmute yourself. How many Judges did you find?
Eleven.
Eleven, you counted 11, okay. Somebody counted another number? Okay, so the Judges in all, they were, in all, they were, they will be 13 altogether. But if you counted 11, it's because one of the Judges was not significant enough. It's called Abimelech. Abimelech was not so significant, so they tied his history to Gideon, Gideon's history. But, but they were 12 and then you add Samuel. Samuel was the last of the Judges. Samuel is considered the last of the Judges. But he is so significant that he has his own book. His story is so big that he had his own book. In fact, two books. The book is, the book of Samuel is so long that they divided it into two, First Samuel and Second Samuel. All of that talking about Samuel's life, okay? So that's something that we, we will look at. This is all talking about the Israelites when they were on the land and how they were living their lives. Then, then you go to the story of David and Solomon. So Samuel, you'll find that Samuel will bring in, will anoint David to become a king. David becomes a king and then, it becomes a king in 1085, right? 1085 and David ruled the whole of Israel, all the tribes as a king. And then his son Solomon also ruled the whole of Israel as a king. And then, but when, when Solomon died, his son Rehoboam, Rehoboam was so wicked that some of the tribes decided to break away, to break away. So there was a divided kingdom. The kingdom of the north, a lot of tribes, a lot of, about 10 tribes banded together and formed the northern tribe of Israel or northern Israel. And there was a northern kingdom and then there was Judah, the southern kingdom. Judah only became a kingdom by itself. But Judah is the tribe that has the promise. It is Judah's tribe that the Messiah is going to come out of. So Judah is the tribe that, that was favored, okay? So the kingdoms divided in 922 B.C. And they lived as separate kingdoms all the way to 722 B.C. 722 B.C. Now at 722 B.C., there's another nation called Assyria. That's present day Iraq area. There's a kingdom there called Assyria. Assyria came and made war against the northern, northern kingdom of Israel and conquered it and took them into exile. They took them into exile and brought other people to settle those lands. So the northern kingdom vanished at 722 B.C. All those people got intermarried with other people, they, they ceased to be Israelites. They, they became part of the Palestine and Mesopotamia area, Iraq, Iran, those places. They became Syria, they became part of those people. But Judah continued, Judah continued as a kingdom all the way to 586 B.C. 586 B.C. But what happened there was that Judah also got carried away by a different nation, Babylon. Babylon came and conquered Judah and took the people from the royal family and took them all, took all the royals out of the country and took them to Babylon, okay? And so later also, it was in Babylon, they had a prophet in Babylon. You have the stories of Daniel and stories of those people. The three young men who were put in the oven, who refused to worship the king of Babylon and they were pushed in oven and they still were not burned because, because God was with them. They told all those stories, you find them there. And then they returned. A time came, this is the time of Isaiah, the prophet. Isaiah the prophet says, God is going to make a new way through the desert. God is going to bring you back. Every mountain will be brought low, the crooked shall be made straight and the rough shall be made smooth. Isaiah prophesied in Babylon and told them, God is going to bring you back to your land. So God did bring them back in 539 B.C. They returned, Judah, only Judah though, the northern kingdom did not come back. The northern kingdom was over. The southern kingdom, Judah, came back because Judah is, has to come back to make sure that it is that tribe that the Messiah is going to come from. So Judah returned from exile in 539 B.C. They, they repaired the law again. The reason why they were taken out to exile was because they were doing bad things. They were, they were violating the commandments. They were always violating, so God punished them and allowed them to be taken out. That's why they went on exile. So when they came back between 539 to 400, they were, they, they were very, very, they began to be very strict with the law. Like people cannot break the law anymore. So people needed to be taught, people needed to be taught. So the way to teach them is to, to bring them into some kind of religious education. That's how religious education began. And that is when rabbis began to show up. Before this time, there were no rabbis. There were prophets, there were, especially prophets. Prophets were the ones who, who actually taught them. But when they came back, there was a need for teachers. There was a need for teachers so that the teachers can teach the law to people, to children, so that nobody might violate the law and then, and then the nation will end up being carried away again. So that is the beginning of rabbi. Rabbi means teacher, rabboni means teacher, okay? So that's when they began to have rabbis. So that was, that was the end then. This is the situation that Jesus was born in. They had come back and they are now, they are now synagogues. Synagogues began to come about because synagogues became the place where they discussed the law. They debated the law, they taught the law. So synagogues are about that. And this is the situation that led its way to the time of Jesus. Jesus was born into this. But before Jesus was born into this time, there was a gap in the Bible between the Old Testament and the New Testament period. There is a little gap. That gap was a period of 400 years. A period of 400 years where we didn't hear much about what was going on, but there are a few things that went on in secular history. We know the things that went on. They are not in the Bible. Some of them are in the Bible, but some of them are not. But there was secular history that was taking place and people were recording the historical things that were happening. Those three things are the things that happened between the two Testaments, the New Testament era and the Old Testament era. So that intertestamental period, there were no prophecies, no more prophets. Prophets vanished, no more prophets. But at that time, that was the time that Greece, the Greeks invaded. You will know, you will know about Alexander the Great, the Greek emperor. Alexander the Great conquered the whole of Asia Minor, including Palestine and all those areas. Alexander the Great conquered all those places and made a huge empire. This is long before the Romans. But Alexander conquered and Greek philosophy took over. And that is why the New Testament, original language, the New Testament was written in is in Greek, not, not Hebrew. The Old Testament was written in Hebrew and Aramaic, which are all the Hebrews' language. But the New Testament was written in Greek because Alexander conquered all these places and they forced people to become Greek speaking people. So what is called Hellenization took place in the whole of that area from 333 B.C. 333 B.C. Alexander marched and conquered those, and formed the Greek Empire, okay? And so the Jewish people also fell, fell in the hands of Greeks. The Greeks taught them, many of them spoke Greek. Many of the Jewish people were speaking Greek. And those who refused to speak Greek or even eat Greek food or eat pork, they were killing them. There's a story in the book of Maccabees, for instance, where, where seven sons were killed one after the other because they refused to eat pork. That was the book of Maccabees, talking about the things that happened within this time. So there was, there was that forced colonization and oppression of the Israelites, the Jewish people. That's at this time, from now on, we call them Jewish people because it's Judah, Jewish. Jew is Judaism, Judah. So that's what happened, Alexander the Great did that. So the Christians who came about, they spoke Greek too. And the Hebrew, the, the Jewish people who spoke Hebrew, they always began to discriminate against the Greek speaking Jews. Their own fellow Jewish people who spoke Greek, they discriminated against them. They tell them they are sellouts, they have lost their culture, they have, they have sold out their culture and things like that. So they looked down upon them, they actually discriminated against them. There is a story in Acts of the Apostles where, where the Greek speaking widows were discriminated against. And that made the apostles gather the community and say, okay, we are going to form deacons. The deacons were going to distribute the food now, so they don't discriminate against the widows. So it made its way into the Christian church. Discrimination made its way into the Christian church, the early Christian church, that people were discriminating against each other, yeah. Then the third story in that 400 years is the rise of Jewish rabbinic tradition. So, so then the rabbis took over totally because this is at the time, the temple, there's no more temple. The temple was destroyed by the Romans within this period because the Greeks were conquered by the Romans. So the Romans took over and they destroyed, they destroyed the temple later on. But rabbis were the leaders now. They became the leaders of Jewish, the Jewish community. There is no more kings, nobody is a king, no more prophets, no more anything. Rabbis are the leaders, okay? So that's, that's the intertestamental period. Before the New Testament period, the New Testament period of course begins with the birth of Christ, okay? With the birth, with the birth of Christ, but that was punctuated by, or prefixed by the birth of John the Baptist. Because Christ is known as the Messiah and there is a need for someone to prepare the people to be able to recognize him when he comes. So God used John the Baptist as the one who prepared the way to alert the people that the time has come for God to actually save God's people. There have been a long time of preparation. Even Exodus from Egypt was part of the preparation. God called Abraham was part of the preparation. And all these things has gone on and on and on and on until John the Baptist was born, which means that God is now ready to actually build the house. It says, I promise to build you a house. But we are not seeing anything, we are not seeing anything, anything until we saw that the land has been cleared or the tractor is clearing the land. Oh, now, okay, now we know practical things are being done. So John the Baptist is about that. It's about letting people know it's time, it's time for you to see exactly what I mean when I say I will save you, okay? So John the Baptist was born, therefore John the Baptist, and then the birth of Jesus. We put this time around 4 B.C. What do we say? 4 B.C. is 0 C.E. Okay, C.E. is common era. The common era began before Jesus, uh, uh, Jesus was born four years before the common era began, okay? So that's, that's what we mean by this. We will go through this B.C. and C.E. and A.D. again, another time. But, but B.C. is the time that we put, we started, we start the Christian era, the New Testament era. So then Jesus was born and then Jesus preached and taught. He was a rabbi, Jesus was a rabboni, he was a teacher. So he taught people, he went around the whole of, he went to the north, the Galilee and came back. He walked the whole land, teaching and preaching. That's the ministry of Jesus. And in the Christian era also, then it got his teaching, many people did not like it. Many people did not like, a majority of the Jewish people did not like his teaching because they were complacent, but Jesus shook their foundation and made them uncomfortable and pushed them to move from their comfort zone. Jesus was like the prophets. When we come to learn the prophets, you come to see that a prophet is a troublemaker. Because a prophet speaks in the name of God, but people feel complacent, they feel comfortable in their zone, they don't want to move. People don't like to change. But the prophetic word says that God always has something better than what you have right now. God always has something better. So even if you are doing alright, watch it, you are going to be moved to do better. There's something more better, don't sit there. So that is the whole point, that prophets are not liked. Prophets are people who are not popular people. Prophets were killed, prophets were were uh put in prison. John the Baptist was put in prison and beheaded afterwards, okay? So the prophets were like that, they spoke God's word, but 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 God's word cost their life. They used their lives to 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 put their lives on the line, but to speak, let God's word go and to shake people's uh comfort zones and make them to continue to grow, to walk, to move forward, rather than being static. So Jesus preaching shook a lot of people. We read a lot about his his interaction with the Pharisees, oh my goodness. They, he he was always on them, yeah. So that led to his arrest. This is another way to see the political aspect of 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 what happened with Jesus. It was mostly political, because Jesus was making the rulers at that time, who were comfortable and cheating people and ruling the people with hard line, he shook their their base. And so they didn't like it, so they plotted and killed him. But he was preaching good goodness, equality of humanity, to for people to love unconditionally, to to give to all these things, to be generous. So that teaching itself is part of his sacrifice, is part of his dying, but that is symbolic. The actual thing followed when he was arrested and killed for the values he came to teach. And that is what we celebrate all the time in the Eucharist, that Jesus gave his life. He gave his life, but he gave his life not just in a piece of bread that is hanging on a cross that we just, no, no, no. Because he taught values. And that's why when we eat that piece of bread, we are saying that we are going to live that value that he taught. We are not going to let it go, he was killed, but those values remain. The value of goodness, love and all those generous and and sympathetic and kind, all these things, they are they are the values that Jesus came to to stand for. So that led him to his death and he rose from the dead. Uh and then we have the God, after all these things, then the group of people that Jesus left, they came together and began to write down the things that have taken place, the things that I'm talking about here, the birth of John the Baptist, the ministry of Jesus and all that. They were written after Jesus rose from the dead and gone. It was written after, not during uh those things. They were written after, so the gospel preaching began. People began to preach the gospel and write some of them down. Uh the early disciples began to move it forward, the apostles started, and then many, Paul came in on the scene, Paul brought it to the the rest of the church. The Holy Spirit helped was the one, the Holy Spirit, or God in the form of the Holy Spirit, was the one inspiring them to be able to preach and to live the values that Jesus taught. So that's the early church, so Peter, we see stories about Peter and the rest of the apostles and the way they lived their lives in Jerusalem. And how they were they were fighting, they were actually coming to confrontation, because their master himself was crucified. So they are not going to have a rosie, it's not going to be easy. We say about over ninety-five percent of the Jewish community did not accept Jesus. Only a small fraction of the Jewish people accepted Jesus. And they were the ones who 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 uh who formed the 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 church, the early church. So they were afraid, they were outnumbered, they were hunted down, they were beaten, they were whipped in front of uh the Sanhedrin, some of them were killed. So you see James, James was the leader of the church in Jerusalem, he was he was beheaded by Herod. Herod killed him. Uh you know the story about Stephen, Stephen was stoned to death, okay? Paul himself was stoned one time too, Paul was stoned and they left him to die, but he didn't die, he got up and run and run away. But they kept on spreading the word of God about Jesus and teaching Jesus's values. So Stephen was stoned and persecution of the Christians went on in Jerusalem uh uh until Paul got to the scene. And Paul began to bring, so at the beginning, they they limited the practice of the faith just among the Jewish people. And the early Christians were all Jewish, all of them were Jewish people, okay? It was Paul who came, Paul is just a Jewish man, but he is the one who brought the faith and asked that the 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 rest of the people who are not Jewish be included, be accepted to be part of the Christian community. So Paul was the one was going to Galatia, going to Corinth, going to setting up churches, setting up communities. Galatia, Ephesus, uh 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 Corinth, uh uh all these places in Asia Minor, all the way going to Turkey area, uh those places were all all the way, and then Rome. Rome also then then became a beneficiary, because all along, all along, Rome was not Christian. Rome was pagan, like like anybody else, they were killing Christians over there, they were crucifying Christians in Rome. Uh but then Romans also, the 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 Jewish people who ran away when when they were persecuted in Jerusalem, they ran away to all other parts and one of the places they went to is Rome. So there's those Jewish people who run away to Rome and living there uh because the Roman Empire uh uh took care of the whole area. So they wanted a place that they can be peaceful, the emperor can protect them. So they were in Rome, that was the church in Rome. So the Book of, the Letter of St. Paul to Romans is to the Roman church, the community that was in Rome. All those letters that you see with Paul, they were letters, so Paul uh that Paul wrote to to the Christian community. See, Paul was a missionary, so when he go he goes to a town, like he comes to Livermore, he will set the 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 church. And then after he sets the church, after he he brings people together, it forms a community, he will choose among them elders. The elders are the people who run the church. They were called presbyteros, the Greek word is pres- presbyteros, uh which means elder, okay? So the presbyteros are the ones who rule the church, but Paul himself is an apostle, so he just leaves, he's a missionary. So he leaves to another place to find and found another church. But the presbyteros are the people who made their, who became what we call priests, because pres- the word presbyteros, the German word for it was Priester. They just go, the equivalent is Priester and that is the priest. That's what we got, where the English word priest comes from the German Priester, which comes from the Greek presbyteros, which actually means elder, okay? So the elders were the ones who ruled the church. And Paul Paul was, went to all these places and founded all these churches. And so whenever he leaves a place, he writes a letter, he sends a message to that church, the leaders of that church, to be given to the community. And those messages are what we call the Letter of St. Paul to the Romans, the Letter of St. Paul to the Ephesians, the Letter of St. Paul to the Corinthians, the Letter of St. Paul. And sometimes he writes two letters, a second Letter of St. Paul to the Corinthians and so on, okay? So that's what you have there, uh the Gentile Christianity, the Gentile Christianity, a Gentile is someone who is not Jewish. Okay, that's a Gentile Christianity, or and the 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 word Gentile actually means uh nations, the other nations, okay? Because Jesus promised them, he says, you will receive the Holy Spirit and you will be my witnesses in Judea, in Samaria and to the ends of the world. Jesus says, when the spirit come, this is what you are going to do. And yes, that is how the faith spread to the Gentiles, to people who are not Jewish as well. So then uh uh there were miracles, the the disciples worked miracles uh and and there was persecution. And then there was a time when the New Testament actually were put down, they were writing, because many times, some of these letters that you hear, the Letter of St. Paul to this, the Letter of, is not actually something that was written. It was a word that was given to a messenger and the messenger traveled to the place. And then they gathered the community of the people and then the messenger speaks out the message. That that is what were committed to writing afterwards. They committed all those things into writing, the New Testament writing period. And then uh and then there was this point where there was a destruction of Jerusalem. In seventy A.D., the Romans destroyed Jerusalem. And the temple was was totally, uh there's just a wall that you can see right now there, that was that remained. Jerusalem was destroyed and the Christians were thrown out, because the Jewish people blamed them, blamed the Christians for the commotion and for the confusion that came in 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 Jerusalem. And so the Romans conquered Jerusalem because the Christians caused trouble. They were debating, they were still talking about this man that they killed, we killed him. Why are you still talking about this man? Why are you bringing commotion into the world, why are you bringing confusion? And when they were struggling like that, the Roman emperor says, these people are are going to destroy my empire. So they they conquered uh uh they destroyed uh Jerusalem. And the Christians spread all over that area. So it took persecution actually to make them to go out. They they were not, they were not willing to go until they were persecuted. So uh so that is a timeline that you see. Uh when I when I pointed out to 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 the last thing, the destruction of Jerusalem, that is the event when the Christians were being persecuted by their own fellow Jewish people. They needed, they needed writings that will support, that will strengthen them, that will make them stand firm, that will make them think about a good thing ahead of them, that 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 if they persevere, they will they will be saved, okay? So there were people who are being persecuted and they needed a message to strengthen them to go through the persecution. So those messages came in imagery, it was imagery form. Uh this is the time of, this is a time that we thought about apocalyptic literature, uh apocalyptic writings. Apocalypse means to uncover, to reveal or to uncover something is apocalypse, uh to to apo- apocalyptous is that. So apocalyptic writing showed the Christians the good that is meant to come, the goodness that is ahead of them if they persevere in doing the right thing, if they persevere in giving their lives, they were being killed, but they had to stand strong. So apocalyptic literature helped in this and so the Book of Revelation was actually describing things like this, describing the situation, was describing for the Christian, telling them, look, heaven is waiting for you. There is something good to be had if you persevere, if you do not fall prey to those who can kill the body but cannot kill the soul. This coming Sunday, we are going to hear Jesus say that. Jesus is going to tell us this coming Sunday, listen to the Gospel reading very well. Jesus is talking apocalyptically, okay? Apocalypse is is strengthening people to be able to persevere in suffering, to persevere in doing good things, even if it's convenient or not convenient, that they should stand firm and that there is a reward, there is something good. So Jesus reveals what is good ahead of us. So once we are seeing that, it empowers us to go on. So the Book of Revelation were written about that, they 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 use imagery, images. And some of these weird images about, and those images are used to describe the terror that was being meted to them, the terror that was being brought on them by the em- empire uh 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 emperors and the soldiers and those who don't believe in Christ, the terror that they bring upon them, uh so they they describe these people, uh they describe these emperors as bulls with uh uh red horns and all kinds of uh imagerys. Those images were just images and they were things that also were meant to be said so that the 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 tyrant king or their soldiers will not know that they are talking about them. So so they use images to say, African-Americans did that too. Uh 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 black people did that when in slavery. They 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 started using uh uh biblical passages, biblical passages to to talk about escaping, to running away, but they can be talking in front of the master, the master does not know that that's what they are discussing. The master, they'll say things like, I am going to the river Jordan and I'm going to cross the river Jordan and I will go to heaven, heaven is Pennsylvania. Heaven for them is Pennsylvania, because the Mason-Dixon line divides the south and the north. So so when the slave was saying, I'm going to cross the river Jordan and I'm going to to I'm going to 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 heaven to see my lord, he is not talking about the Bible. He just used the Bible, you know, and use the image and describe, he would describe escaping and plot, make all that plots. Uh 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 if you watch that Underground Railroad uh uh documentary, you will see how, not not just the slaves themselves, but there are other white people who supported them, who helped them this uh to map their way to 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 run to freedom, okay? So so that's that's the way that the Christians, it was apocalyptic writing. That the Christians is a form of writing that we can find in the Bible. The Book of Daniel is apocalyptic literature, Revelation is apocalyptic literature. There are many other apocalyptic sayings in some of some parts of the gospel. And like I said, the Gospel reading this coming Sunday, Jesus uses apocalyptic message uh 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 speech to teach his people. So that's, this is the, this is the the timeline, this is the the story of the Bible, from Genesis to Revelation, okay? This is the story and and if you if you study that very well, just eyeball some of the main important events for all the books, you can tell the story of the Bible uh easily. And so uh we are now ten minutes away, uh so so here are the judges. Uh so we are the judges, uh judges occupied that point where Joshua died. Joshua led them to the promised land, they settled the land, they conquered, they conquered the uh people, but they didn't conquer everybody, some of the people were still lingering around uh uh at that time. But they have effectively taken their lands. So we know where we know where uh Manasseh uh is, we know where um uh Dan is, we know where Judah is, we know that Judah is in the south, we know where Simeon is, we know where all these tribes of Israel, they all settled the land, okay? Benjamin uh and so on. Uh but but when they settled there and when Joshua died, they found themselves leaderless. Leader, there there's no more leader. In fact, when you start reading the Book of Judges, chapter one, the very first paragraph, they, when Joshua died, they went to God, they prayed to God and said, who is going to lead us to fight the rest of the Canaanites who are walking around here? Uh who is going to lead us to go and attack, if we want to attack somebody, if we're going to fight uh somebody who is trying to disturb us? And and the story says that God asked them to to let Judah lead, take the lead. So Judah is now going to lead. And it is written in such a way that you might think that it is one person, Judah, because Judah consulted his brother Simeon. And, uh, but they are not talking, they are talking about a whole, a whole tribe, a whole ethnic group, that's all they call Judah. So that tribe Judah became the preeminent tribe. If you're reading, if you're reading your Bible, always consider that, Judah among the twelve tribes of Israel. Judah was the favorite tribe. And that tribe is what God is going to appoint people from all the way till a lance on Jesus Christ. That, that's the line, Judah, so they, but at this time, they have no king, there's nothing like human king. There's no human king, Israel never had, God is their king, God fights their war for them. They still have the Ark of the Covenant, the covenant represents God's presence in their midst. And they carry that box everywhere, when they are going to fight wars, they carry that box, God is that, okay? So, so they, the people needed some guidance, so God was appointed to them in the book of Judges. You will see that how things were happening is this. They will forget, uh, about the commandments. They will do something against the commandment, they will be idol, idolatrous, they will, they will worship another god. Remember what Moses was concerned about? Why Moses wrote the tyranny for them was that they were going to, to be influenced by other nations. With their gods, some of them are going to marry people from other nations. And normally men, because women were not allowed to go out to marry. But men, the men married, some of the king, some, later on kings. But some of the men in their tribes married other women from other nations and those women brought their religion. Their gods to Israel. And so that was what was happening, the progression is four, four things were happening in the book of Judges. They will do a bad thing, they will worship a separate god, they will, they will commit idolatry. And then, um, God will allow a foreign nation to battle against them and conquer them. And, and, and win the war, okay? And then they will be oppressed by that nation, they will be oppressed, they will be, they will be, uh, enslaved. And then they will cry out to God and then God will give them a judge. God will appoint something for them who will be a judge, so that person judges Israel will come and, and, and tell them what is wrong with them. And how they can repair themselves and, and, and so these are the people that, that God was appointing to them, they were called judges. They were no kings, but they were some sort of, uh, uh. Uh, they, they, they were called prophet judges, uh, we call them prophet judges. Uh, they spoke God's word and. If you see, uh, uh, an example of that was Deborah, uh, Deborah is a woman. That's, that's very, very revealing. That that early stage of Israelite na- Israelite nation, a woman was appointed by God. To be Israel's judge, a judge prophet in that sense. If you read Judges, chapter four, verse six through seven, you'll see the work of Deborah or Deborah or Deborah, however you pronounce it. But Deborah was, was a woman, uh, they spoke God's word and that is why we also call them prophets. Because prophets spoke God's word, we will come back to that again, profemi means, means instead of. So prophets are those who speak in the stead of God, instead of God, for God, they, they are God's spokespeople. So, so Deborah, uh, tells us that, uh, and we see they, uh, to deliver Israel like Moses did. They delivered Israel like Moses did, they were also called, called, yeah, they were called, it's like vocari means to call, vocari. So when you answer the call, uh, then what you are answering to is a vocation, uh, vocation. So there, there, they were, they were also, uh, called like anybody else who is called to assume a vocation. You see that example in Gideon's life, Gideon was called in Judges, chapter six, verse eleven through eighteen. Then some were chosen from birth, some, their birth was just like Jesus's birth was predicted. Some were already chosen from their mother's womb and, and Samson is one of those examples, Samson was chosen from his mother's womb. Uh, it was promised to the people in Judges, chapter thirteen and fifteen. They are concerned, what they were concerned about, the judges, what they were concerned about is holy war, okay? This is the, this is the holy war theory that, this is where a lot of nations got holy war theory, uh, from this. That somebody is going to do, is going to kill another person, so I'm going to war with that person. I, I will use myself to go and fight the wars to, to keep peace over here with somebody, uh. Uh, that's what they call holy war, they were most, mostly, they were military, many of them were military leaders. They were generals actually, many of them were generals, uh, like Gideon, okay? They were military leaders who were inspired by the fulfillment of the covenant, they were so mad. Madly in love with God's covenant that the people keep the covenant. So, so they did it through military means to keep the people faithful, uh, in the promised land, okay? And then, uh, they were against very, very much against idolatry to worship another god. Very, very much against idolatry, in fact, you'll, you'll be killed if you, if you, if you, uh, uh, worship another god. So especially in the Canaanite gods that were called Baal, you will read about Baal, B A A L. Uh, it's not a particular god that is called Baal, there are a series of gods that were called Baal. In fact, Baal, the name Baal was like a generic name for a foreign god, okay, a foreign god, okay? So there were different kind of Baals, you, you read that as Judges, chapter six, verse twenty-five through thirty-two. Uh, then they were against kingship. They were against kingship, Israel cannot have a human king, no way. God is their king, they have only a spiritual king. And so the judges make sure that the Israelites do not get there, do not, do not even think about it. That they want to have somebody, uh, as a king sitting on the throne, that's an abomination. And you read Judges, chapter eight, verse twenty-two through twenty-eight, they were against kingship and they make sure that Israel does not get there. But guess what? Israel will get there, okay, Israel will get there, okay? So, uh, it's almost, it's eight o'clock now, I want to stop here, we will continue to discuss the, uh, everything about Judges. And you will see how they transition to the monarchy, they began to have kings, why they began to have kings, okay? So we are still telling the story, uh, and going forward. Uh, I know that some of you know about the first king of Israel, who was the first king of Israel? Who knows that? The first king of Israel, what was his name?
Saul.
Saul, Saul, yes. Saul, King Saul, yes, so how King Saul came to be appointed, uh, we're going to talk about that, okay? Uh, the next, next Thursday when we come together, how they had a human king and what that means, what that means for our spirituality too. There's a very beautiful spirituality about that, how they landed in having a human king. And, and, and how they broke God's heart, how they broke God's heart. Uh, because it looks like they are denying God, God's kingship, well, we're going to talk about that and explain that later. Any questions?
Unmute yourself.
Uh, you can unmute yourself now and. Are you bringing any question?
I had one comment that was from way at the beginning.
Yeah, there was a comment from the beginning from Gloria. I've said before that all the violence makes it hard for me to read Old Testament. And in the first chapter of Judges, a king has his thumbs and big toes cut off. Sounds like a mafia hit job to me. Thank you, uh, uh, it's always hard to read the Old Testament, but we have to read it. And, and we will continue to express the fact that this is the elementary level, this is the beginning of faith. Uh, uh, we, we have a component of it in the New Testament when Jesus spiritualizes these things. So you are not, when you read the Old Testament, don't stay there, if you stay there, it's going to frighten you, it's going to kill your faith. We are not people of the Old Testament, we are people of the New Testament. And the New Testament, the New Testament is full of love, unconditional love. He, he, Jesus, Jesus was not that king that is cutting people's toes, uh, Jesus died on a cross. That's how, how, how open, how sacrificial the New Testament is. So, so that's totally different, uh, when you come to a new testimony, you read the Old Testament in order to have a context, how did this start? That's all you are looking for, but mature, go to the New Testament. And then you will find a fulfillment, you'll find a loving, uh, what that means completely in your life, okay? Okay. Thank you all very much for making time again, God bless you.
Thanks Father Kami.
Yes, thank you.
Good night.
And good night everybody. Say that again.
Are you going to have mass in church?
Yes, uh, we're going to start having mass in church on, uh, July fourth, from July fourth.
Now I saw where C C O P is starting Sunday and I thought, wow.
Yeah, oh, well, that's fine, uh, we have a few things to put in place, we are trying to put these in place. To make it more, uh, uh, protective, uh, uh, that people are safe. So, uh, we're going to start on July fourth, just a couple of weeks, just a couple of weeks. Don't worry, sharpen your appetite.
Okay, God bless.